The city council meeting Tuesday, February 12th to order. Please rise for the invocation, remain rising for the pledge of allegiance.
God, our creator of all there is and ever shall be, we ask you to shine down a light on the path that our council will take tonight and choose the best and the highest good for our city and our residents. We ask for peace in our country and peace in the world. We thank thee. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Sal.
Mayor Delmasse.
Here.
Vice Mayor Terrence Rowe.
Here.
Councilwoman Jenny Sorrell.
Here.
Councilman William Dipmer.
Here.
Councilman Richard Bloom.
Here.
City Attorney James Matthew.
Here.
City Manager Vincent Lupo.
Here.
Okay, we have, do I have a motion to approve? Council minutes.
Motion approved in the minutes?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Comments from the general public? Steve Patton.
Hi, my name's Steve Patton. I just bought a house here in Port Ritchie and excited to be here. I'm at fifty-two thirteen Bay Boulevard. And my son and I are there, just, I'll be living there, but he's helping me because he wants me out of my house so he can have it. And so I'm a school teacher, Pasco County, at Anclode High School Special Ed and own a little tire store in Tarpon Springs. So I'm happy to be here and just wanted to come and introduce myself and say I'm glad to be a part of Port Ritchie.
Welcome, Steve. Welcome. Thank you. Lane Lee. And I'm gonna get that poll.
Pardon?
I'm gonna get the poll for our house.
Lane Lee, fifty-seven thirteen Berlin. Let's have basically a series of questions. And I have to direct them to you, so, but they don't all probably have the answers from you. The first would be, does the traffic camera on US nineteen and Ridge nor, facing north, have the ability to capture right turn violators when through traffic is stopped?
Chief?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Next?
How are we proceeding on getting approval from FCT for the dog park and the playground at Waterfront Park?
Good.
Next is some people who-
Wait, you're gonna get an answer here if you want it.
The, the dog park and the playground location have already been approved by the FCT.
Okay, thank you. I've heard some people ask about the green recycle bin not being here at Town Hall anymore. There is one at the fire station. And I use it all the time. I have a question, actually. Does anyone know or have any information that we could get about Reverend R. Cook? He's, hi, his name is on a, on the, on the park at River Gulf Road and Washington Street.
Cook's Park. We'll, we'll get the information, sir.
Yeah. And have we sent out the RFPs on for the dredging yet?
I have an announcement to make, sir.
Thank you.
Michael Grimes.
Good evening. Michael Grimes, five four four zero, Quiz Drive, Port Ritchie. Before I begin, by time allowed, may I see three minutes? My wife Sherri Grimes in the back will yield her time to me. There are some questions. I don't need answers as I go through my statement. If you choose to answer the questions at the end, you may do so. Mr. Mayor, respected council members, I want to thank you for your efforts in our community to drive growth coupled with a minimum housing standard. Also, thank you, Chief DeCannon, for your service and your efforts to keep our community safe. All communities should look for areas to improve as well as have a minimum quality of life to live by. Mr. Lupo, at the January twenty-second council meeting, Councilman Bloom asked you about fence issues. You replied by saying, "The fencing issue has been reviewed several times by council, past and present, and previous city managers." You also stated that the current opinion of the fencing subject is justified and lawful. We have a charter and a city code to live by. Your reply does not answer Councilman Bloom's question. You simply stated that the laws are justified. Yet, the city still has property that does not meet code, meet the fence code. Councilman Bloom deserves a proper answer that addresses his question and concern on the properties that violate the code. More important, what action you will take to resolve it. I have concern over management of the city and its departments. Mr. Lupo was hired in two thousand sixteen and vowed to move the city forward. Mr. Lupo was given a raise in two thousand seventeen with a car allowance, provided an assistant city manager as well as an executive admin assistant to assist him. I do not see nor understand what Mr. Lupo has done to move our city forward. The city has given Mr. Lupo a blank canvas to paint along with an increase in pay and a full staff. The city is stagnant with minimal to no growth in addition to properties still not meeting a minimum housing standard. Yet, the current budget calls for an increase of eight point five two percent or nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars from the previous year and an increase in the mileage rate from five point seven five one eight to five point eight two nine three. Mr. Lupo is not a resident of Port Ritchie or Pasco County. I honestly do not see him having much interest in our community other than a paycheck. What are the citizens and taxpayers of Port Ritchie getting for our money? Why does a city of roughly twenty-eight hundred residents need a city manager, assistant city manager, and executive admin assistant? Is the job that demanding? Is the council aware of the massive payroll and excessive expenses our city has? If immediate changes are not made to strengthen our city, we will fail. Our city does not create enough income for excessive payroll, unnecessary positions, careless spending, and outstanding debts. The city has struggled, excuse me, with dredging and expired permits as well as inconsistent management of permits issued and code enforcement. We have several properties with work completed and the required permits never pulled. We also have properties with permits that have never been closed out properly. Ms. Sorrell, your property does not meet code for work completed. The permit you pulled is now null and void as well as the variance. Are you aware that you must now go through the process again, pay the fees, and the Florida building code has changed twice since then? How does a current council member have a property that does not meet code for the past four years? All of these issues, Mr. Lupo, is responsible for. Mr. Lupo, when you were rehired, your job was to manage the city and its employees on the good days and bad. Council must hold you accountable again, as done previously in two thousand four. Last, I would advise council to consult with an outside independent agency so an audit of the city's finances and record keeping can be done. Thank you.
Sherri and Todd Malarkey.
McClary.
M- McClary, sorry.
No, Malarkey.
I'm sorry, that was.
That's okay. I met you last time. Do you want to start?
Uh, yes, we're actually-
We have three minutes.
We actually have six minutes.
No.
We are here, we represent eighty-seven thirty-one Betty Street. We have talked to the code enforcement several times concerning a couple of our neighbors and their excessive overgrowth on their properties in terms of weeds and grass. We've been going after them for the past seven weeks. As of now, we haven't received any response. I believe our neighbor said that they are protected grasses and flowers that are currently overgrown on his property. And, uh, but no one could tell us what protected species. The previous owner to our neighbor actually said, uh, weekly, cut those on a weekly basis. So I'm not sure what protected grasses are there, but the previous owner cut them every week. So, um, they are thriving quite well.
Yeah.
So we just wanted to see what kind of procedures are in place for code enforcement to actually enforce the codes of cutting back overgrown grasses and weeds on their property.
Have, have you had the code enforcement officer over?
I've been there weekly.
They've been there several times.
Yes.
Well, we've been to the code enforcement and code enforcement has been to, to the property at least three times that I know of.
Where'd he go, Chris? Alec?
There are some other issues involved, Mr. Mayor, and it's a dispute between two, two neighbors. There are issues involved. Code enforcement has, has been trying to resolve the issues. And we're trying to get some answers for them.
Okay.
Well, maybe, maybe, maybe this council can help out. Do you have, uh, have you been given any paperwork from code enforcement?
No.
No.
Okay. Well, I, I suggest that we take a look at it and see if we can assist the, the, the folks here. They, they've taken out their time to come here and present this to the council. And I think we need to take a look at it. So I recommend that, that Alec present that issue to us at the, at the next council meeting.
Will be done.
Okay. So Alec is gonna decide whether they're-
Not decide, present the issues to you, sir.
Okay.
Let's see what the problem is, okay?
I doubt there's any protected grasses, but I'm not a neurologist.
Thank you very much. Uh, one further question. In our canal, adjacent to our property, I understand that it's not on the dredging list. How do we get it added to the dredging list?
We will be working on a lot of those. Which canal is it?
Betty.
Eighty-seven thirty-one Betty.
Right off of Betty, right off of Betty Street, yeah. Betty and Green, those.
Cullum, Channel, if I remember right.
It's right, it's right.
Both Opos, Betty and Coons are off. Is that correct?
Not sure. I think Opos is on there. I thought there's, were on there. I thought the one going out to Brasher Park was on. I asked-
I'll have to check.
Some time ago for a list of all these channels and the ones that were deleted, and I never got. So I still don't know where we're at.
There's a long history of dredging, and unfortunately, I know all of it. At one point, the north side, which would be you, Betty, Opos, and Coons, decided that since we couldn't dredge once you got to the, uh, grass flats, that they didn't want to be, be assessed and they didn't need to have a dredging. Now, I think if you get up on plane before the, those flats, you're fine.
Correct.
And I'll tell you the other things I think, not in a public meeting. But you're welcome to, to call.
And after about your committee?
Uh, yeah, and after the meeting, I am, was approved for the land use committee. I never got an invitation or anything to attend any meetings. And I noticed on the website, it still shows that this space is vacant. So I'm just kinda questioning if I'm on the committee or not on the committee.
You received a letter?
I received, received a letter, though, that I was. It was the land use committee?
We'll update the website, but that committee hasn't met yet. So when they do, you'll be notified on the next time they meet.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now have, uh, John King.
May you have time?
You'll, uh, Matthew Todd.
Matthew Todd, eighty-three oh one Congress. Mr. John King and Joe Precy is gonna yield their time to me. Mr. Mayor, council? Should council members and the mayor be held to the same standards and consequences for building codes violations as the residents? It is my understanding that building permits become void if a satisfactory inspection is not completed within six months or if the work performed is not completed within one year. In my possession are two building permits. One for a pool cage that states installed pool enclosure per plan and all codes and, and is dated June tenth, two thousand fifteen. And the other that states concrete patio and pool surrounding per all codes is dated March eleventh, two thousand fourteen. Neither one of these structures have ongoing an inspection and are more than a year old. The permits are void. I understand that the pool enclosure will not pass inspection typically. A building instructor that will not pass inspection must be altered to the proper building codes to pass inspection or be removed. The structure over the past four years have not been altered to pass code, nor it has been removed. Now, the council person did not comply with the permits and the building codes. Is this ethical on the council person's part? Is it fair that the council person does not have to comply with the building codes like the residents of, of all the other residents have to? Why should the council person be treated any differently than a resident? And finally, is the type of council person that should be sitting on council? Does the city want a council person to take advantage of her position? What action by the building department will be taken or will it be continually ignored like it has been for the past five years? Thank you.
Joe Vittorioso. Agenda.
Joe Vittorioso, forty-nine sixteen Shoreview Court. I was here about a month ago and I mentioned about trash pickup at two AM in the morning, twice a week. Wakes everybody up, we know that. The windows will be open shortly, it'll be worse. Well, I did a little bit of homework and stopped one of the guys driving the truck, Parker. And I said, "Hey, why come you guys come so early?" I says, "You do the same in Newport Ritchie?" They said, "No, we, there's, they have a separate ordinance that says simply, trash cannot be picked up before seven AM." Simple as that, has nothing to do with noise, has nothing to do with anything. So that's, that's how I did the homework. And, um, and I was just thinking that if the council could take a look at that ordinance that Newport Ritchie has, take the word new out of the way and make it Port Ritchie. And if the council will go with that, all of us in Hobbs Isles will be thumbs up and extremely happy about it. So-
Joe, we will do it.
Okay, that sounds perfect to me and I hope it makes your life easy and we can get the trash picked up at, at least a decent hour where everyone isn't waking up twice a week.
Or you could stay up that late.
Uh, that's how I got, that's how I got the driver. I said, "That's it, I'm waiting up, I've gotta find out something." Anyway, but thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Joe.
Mr. Mayor, so, so this, uh-
I'm gonna, I was gonna agenda that for the next meeting. Unless you want to-
No, go ahead.
Please agenda that for next meeting. And that would be, we'll need to write an ordinance quick.
If you're asking whether we need to write an ordinance, I, I don't, couldn't tell you without researching. We could write it on it, they're franchised over there, but there's probably something we could do. Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll check it out.
We will, we will address it. Okay. I think I ran out of people. City manager. I'm sorry, did someone else want to speak? Go ahead, please.
Sandra Spoldy, eighty-six twelve Green Street. Hello, people, hello. Our city almost went bankrupt when we lost Mr. Lupo, a city manager, way back when. The other city manager that took over was putting us in terrible debt. We had a lot of problems till we got Vince Lupo back again. Our city has never been ran so well as it is now. I just want to inform everybody about that. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay, we will bring it to the council, no, we'll bring it to the city manager.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council, I have several announcements to make. First one being, if you'll notice in Sunday's paper, we've posted the bid documents for channels one eighteen and twenty-six A in the news media requesting bids for the dredging of the project. Essentially, what I'm saying is that we have met all of the criteria. We've gone through the county, we've gone through the grant program, we've gone all the way up to the federal government back. We are advertising for bids for channels one eighteen and twenty-six A. The project is underway, the same as it was for the DMMA and channel nineteen. Long awaited and finally here.
That's campaign time?
Uh, that is several different medias, including electronic medias.
Can you give me the rest?
Well, give a, give us a copy of that, okay? We'll get your copy. Additionally, we have received approval for a one hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollar community development block grant for the sidewalk construction on River Gulf and Grand Boulevard. So that's a new grant that we received. It goes in conjunction to our earlier discussions about sidewalk along, um, River Gulf and from Grand Boulevard down to nineteen. And that's a community development block grant that was, we've received and approved. We are also advertising for bids for the nineteen media landscaping project. Long awaited, we're finally there, we're advertising to go out to bids. We're moving forward with the refurbishing, which is what is required of the grant, for the restrooms at the Waterfront Park. The building official has met with staff and is currently working on plans for that refurbishment. We're under a deadline of April for the completion of the refurbishing of those restrooms at Waterfront Park. And we believe that, uh, once the plans are approved, we shouldn't have, we should be able to complete the refurbishing by the end of March and no later than that. And those are the four-
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
We have to put RFP out for that.
No, we don't, sir.
We don't?
No, we do not. It's refurbishing. It's not the multimillion dollar grandiose revamping of, of the park or its facility. It is simply the refurbishing of that restroom per the requirement of the grant. Uh, in speaking with the licensed building official and with our facilities people, we can, in fact, uh, pull a permit, we will, and complete the refurbishment of that facility. We're, we're happy to bring plans to council so that they can take a look at it.
We have, we have plans?
There, the sketches are being made for the chief building official to sign off on as a permit and we'll begin the construction.
Okay, and how do we choose a contract? How do we choose a con, how do we choose a contract?
It'll be done in home, in-house, sir.
We're gonna do it?
We're going to do it in-house, sir.
Okay.
And that's our, is the partial report. Attached, you'll find, I can distribute this as best I can. This is the city, list of city projects and updates. You'll pass that, you'll pass that down, please. This is the list of city projects that are ongoing as of January, uh, twenty nineteen. Under administrative sections, we have the Restore Act. Dredging of channels one and eighteen is ongoing. The Restore Act DEP requirements is ongoing. Rate studies, the utility rates and building fees is upcoming, which is absolutely essential. Negotiations with Pasco County, Orange Grove Avenue have been completed. They're getting ready to come out for Candlelight Court and to complete the Orange Grove Avenue project. Recultification of the city codes has been completed. We've increased the use of the nickel, nixle system. In the building department, we've done major renovations, renovations. There were major renovations at Walmart, which were just, were completed, but unfortunately, uh, there was an incident involving a, uh, a, a car that destroyed some of those renovations, so they're gonna have to start all over again.
These are Walmart renovations?
This is, uh, renovations at Walmart. This is the building department's inspections. As I said earlier, the beautifications of US nineteen meeting is ongoing. The CRA Residential Maintenance Grant Program is continuing. We've been distributing grants. I, I believe we have approximately nine grants that have been distributed. Avila Bay Construction is underway. I invite anyone who's interested in seeing that new construction to go out. It's the end of, um, Old Post on the right-hand side. Snug, Snug Cove Project is under discussion. The Carib Bay Project may be upcoming. It's still up for discussions. There's an update of numerous housing codes for improved enforcement, which you all passed just recently, so that function has been completed. We're updating the commercial codes for improved enforcement, which you're working on right now, in fact, and your workshop is scheduled for the twenty-sixth of February. In the, in the utilities department, we have a decreased reliance on bulk water purchase. That project is ongoing. We've improved the water recovery operation to the point where, I had it almost fourteen years ago. Uh, our well production is up. We've been working with the proper authorities to re-permit a well that has been dormant. This is the charts with respect to water production, water rates and water. And, uh, you'll note that we continue to recover water. We continue to produce quality water. We continue to recover water at a great savings. And for some people who've only been in the community for maybe eight or nine months, they haven't had a water rate increase here in approximately two years. And, excuse me, I have a cold and I'd like to... So for you newcomers to our community, this council is very concerned about the cost. And we have not had a rate increase in the last two years for water. And I'll be bringing back that discussion to council during this next budget cycle with respect to that issue. Again, excuse me. We've, uh, we purchased a Public Works Utility Module office. As you know, that is now upstanding, complete, and is being functioned. We're in process of installing the Public Works Utility Modular Sections. That's been completed. We've upgraded our meter reading program, that's still ongoing. And as I just spoke earlier, we're certifying well number seven from a simple test monitoring well to a full production well. Our fire department, we're, has completed repairs to engine number forty-two. Acquisition of the Fire Police Response Vessel Grant is ongoing. We made an application for a grant and the potential is pretty real that we might receive that grant. They've completed water rescue training. They've completed wild, wild, wildland firefighting training and our, the Firehouse Sub Company Grant Application is also ongoing. Uh, with our police department, we've updated two new patrol vehicles. That's still on, ongoing. We've updated the weapons for the police department. We have ongoing training initiatives. We've been cooperating and collaborating with Pasco County drug activity. Uh, we have an application for two used patrol units from, from Brooksville, which we've completed. We've obtained two vehicles at a minimal expense from the city of Brooksville. And we instituted a program per council's request of a sergeant's daily up, daily update reports so that at any one time I can present to my council daily reports about what happens in this community so that, so that our council can keep abreast of those events. As far as Public Works Department is concerned, our FERDAP improvements to the Waterfront Park are ongoing. We made improvements out to Brasher Park. And as anybody will, well, if, as you may remember- We've made improvements out to Brasher Park, and as anybody will, as you may remember, just several days ago, they had a major fish release at Brasher Park, where there were approximately fifteen hundred small redfish released, along with quite a few snook, to encourage new growth for the fish population and abilities for Brasher Park. And I would encourage anyone to go out to Brasher Park, it's absolutely lovely. We're in a process of working for the rehabilitation of Nix Park Boat Ramp, that is still ongoing. I spoke to you about the new sidewalks grant that we just received from the Community Development Block Grant in excess of a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. We're working on some repairs to stormwater drainage system. We're coordinating the required modifications to Avila Bay, that's still ongoing. And as you know, Orange Grove Avenue reconstruction will begin shortly, thanks to our agreement with the county and the transfer of property to them. And that, mayor and council, is my report.
Okay, may I ask you a few questions? Vince, there's some median ordinance that, I guess, restricts height so that we can see the signs? Is that the idea? In other words, we can't plant trees that grow a certain height because of some ordinance somewhere that says you have to be able to see from both lanes those big signs that are ugly? Is that something, can't we fight that?
I believe that's a state law and controlled by FDOT. And we have absolutely no control. You can certainly make a request to FDOT to consider, but you're gonna, you'll run right smack into FDOT. Ms. Ewald at one time ran into that deal, as did our current code enforcement individuals.
Okay, so that has to go to FDOT, period. I'm gonna be meeting with them. Well, number seven, that was the test well that we did before we ran the...
We had a test or monitoring well, and we used that to gauge the quality of some water, capacity. It was not a full or complete well. And what I've done is I've turned that into an absolute, our staff, I should say, I have, turned it into an absolute functioning well. We're working on the permits, we just received some notifications from them that they are amenable to it, we're setting up the limits for it, which will mean additional production of super clean, clear water. As you're aware, this community in the last two years has had a drastic modification and revitalization of its water production facility. We've gone to complete filtration, we are taking, utilizing our iron dehydration operation to recover water, which means recovered money back to the city. The new well will be a production well, which allows two things. It'll allow us to produce water during certain periods of time that may, may eventually put us in a different position with respect to distributing water. Also, it'll allow us to balance out the wells with respect to when we have a large influx of population utilization to either use or not to use, and to balance out the wells for better recovery time. So, that well will be permitted very shortly.
So, we can go from mine here, rest this one?
Yes, sir.
Just gives us extra rest time?
It gives us extra rest time, if you will, recuperation time. It'll give us extra clear, clean water that does not necessarily require full filtration nor chemical treatment. So, it's part of our ongoing effort to improve our water production and distribution systems.
Okay. Couple more questions, I'll turn you guys over. The Nix Park Ramp, did Alex sign that with his production?
Yes, we, the neighbors signed and delivered a document to us that included their acceptance of a reduction in the length of that dock. The engineers who are designing it, redesigning, are checking to make sure that at that new level, there will be a proper level so that indeed it will be a functioning apparatus. If, in fact, that works, then we'll be out, we'll be going out to bid. If not, we'll come back to council, alert council, and go without that, but we'll go out. It depends entirely on what the engineering report is from our engineer.
You know what I think engineer, but...
Yes, sir. But it's required. What we don't want to do is build a dock out there that, at a lower tide, boats won't be able to utilize it. And that's because of the reduction from twenty-six feet to twenty feet. That six feet may be critical. We won't know until the engineers gives us the full report.
Tell him to call me, 'cause I got that one.
All right, sir.
Update on weapons, what did we buy these guys? I don't know about Cox having another weapon.
We've just had some repairs made to a few of the weapons that we have, just some repairs.
You didn't buy any?
No.
STI, all right, I'm done.
But, do you mind? Go ahead. Just to piggyback on this, these engineering studies that are going to be done. Do you have a timeframe for this?
I'm in it, right now. We're working with it on a daily basis.
With the engineers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that should be completed, what, within a couple of weeks?
Absolutely, less than that.
So, by the next council meeting, we should have some feedback on this?
I should hope, we might even be out to bid by then.
Okay. If I understand this right, CRA Residential Maintenance Grant Program, that was fifty thousand dollars we all looked at?
Yes, sir.
And you have about nine that you've issued so far, so that's nine thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
Hard to believe that there are no other folks that could use that thousand dollars.
Not only that, councilman, but as you will recall, council was very specific in allowing half of those grants to be above a certain income and half the grants to be below. We would have thought that the lower level would have gone quickly, but we advertised, we talked, we spoke about it, I believe, at the last council meeting or the one before that, please come in and talk to our people and get the grant. It's a thousand dollar managing grant one way or another, or a thousand dollar grant. We only have about nine, nine or ten at this point in time.
And I don't recall so much has happened. We had a thousand dollars that didn't have to match based on a certain income level?
Yes.
Is that right, Will, you remember that?
Yes, yes.
And then we had the next level...
One was not matching, one was matching.
And the next level, right?
Yes, sir.
One was matching. Maybe if this thing stalls out like this, maybe we need to look at that matching, a thousand dollars matching. Maybe there are a number of people who can't match that. We have fifty thousand dollars, it'd be nice to give those folks that money.
Again, it's limited to one thousand dollars per applicant.
Right, right.
Okay, all right.
But, but, but the problem is...
I'm saying that for...
When you get to the second level, you have to match. So, if you, in other words, they get a thousand dollar grant, they have to match it with a thousand dollars? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I will bring back to council at the next meeting a full report on the specifics, on the economics of the grant, above and below, and you can make a decision to modify the grant if you so choose.
And it's up to the council?
Absolutely up to council.
If you want to change it, alter it, or try to get some of this money out to these folks that could use it?
I'll bring your full report to council at the next meeting.
Do we know what percentage of people of those ones that were used, which ones were matching and which ones were not?
It's about half, it's about half.
About half.
We'll look for the report. I have more comments, but do you want to go, or do you want me to finish up?
You guys got some? Yeah, I've got a few. Just briefly, we talked about flooding. Mr. Hughes had come up with an idea to help alleviate some of the flooding at that, was it the southeast corner on Old Post and Bay?
Yes.
Has that moved forward?
Yes, we have retained an engineer who's doing the studies for us. We have his report, and we're, we'll be submitting it to, has it been completed or close to being completed, his report?
I'm supposed to hear something by next week?
By next week. We have some initial, we have received the initial reports from him, but not his final report. At this point in time, I can tell you that with his initial reports, it looks very favorable to utilizing that method.
Okay, and have we heard, I know with the hike and bike path, the county did pass that, correct, on their portion of it anyway?
Yes, sir. That has been approved. In fact, I believe we received the documents. You're talking about the joint between Newport Ritchie, Austin County? Yes, sir.
And the last thing was the redfish release, I don't know if anybody got to go out there, but that was, it was pretty neat to see when they put back in all the hatchery fixes that they took out from Crystal River Hatchery, and it was, it was pretty neat to go see. So, if you ever have an opportunity to see it again, it was worth going to.
All right, I'll go. First of all, I want to start off with this last week, the city parted company with Mr. Bill Muse. To my great disappointment, for some reason, we couldn't find a way to not make that happen. And I'm very disappointed that management couldn't make that happen, because we've lost some great talent there. We've, a man that had great knowledge. He was a great friend of this city and did a lot of things for us. Decorated this city hall to the nines during Christmas. He'll be missed. And do we wish him well? Yes. And unfortunately, someone else is going to reap the benefit of our folly. With that being said, I want to get on to a couple of things here. The playground, I understand we finally got some letter back on the playground stating we can proceed. Why did it take so long?
It's the federal, it's the government. That is, that...
You know, the letter didn't go out till when? Right after, sometime after Christmas, and that playground was removed well before Christmas, so I wanted to know why that letter to the government did not go out sooner than it did. People are asking me these questions, and I'm getting tired of making excuses. I would like to see a little more urgency put on the things that are done around here. For that to sit there after that mistake was made and not send a letter out till way after Christmas, they got back to us quite quickly, I think. So, let's get it up and let's get it moving. You talked about Orange Grove. Have you had any contact about Orange Grove? What is the county planning on doing at this point? Have you had any communication since the last, the last communication we've had with them?
Yes. We've spoken with, I spoke with the individuals when we transferred the property. They assured me that the engineering company, their engineering group had their plans ready and that they're moving forward with it. I haven't spoke with the county administrator as to exactly what that timetable was, but I'll be more than happy to call him tomorrow and check with him.
I wish you would, because I was over there and it's not even on a docket.
Is it, sir? Is it on their docket or on the employee's work docket?
The employee told me that all the engineering is sitting there in the computer, they are waiting for a go-ahead, which they're not getting from up above.
I will talk with the county administrator who gave me assurances that it would.
This is frustrating, if I have to do your job, I don't get enough money for it.
I don't believe you're doing my job, sir, I'm sorry.
Well, when I have to follow up and make sure these projects are moving forward, yes, I am doing your job. The Nix Parks, we've handled. I think what else there was here? Oh, the website. We've got a website I tried to do some research on, and still, Jocelyn, we cannot go and do any type of, there's no audio available, it says on it, you can't do any resource work on it. You can't go back and look up a meeting or anything else. I have to go to YouTube to do that, I think that's ridiculous. As you see, I'm frustrated because we're not getting communication on things. I had no idea we were doing these bathrooms. I don't know, I guess I wasn't here that day. We haven't seen any pictures. I wasn't even aware that we were doing bathrooms until it was brought up, and I found out about it through Gil Dog, that they were offering to donate some things to do the bathroom, so I'm wondering why we need fifty thousand dollars to do that. Do we have a replacement in place yet for Aaron's position in the financial department?
No, we have not advertised for a position. What we are doing right now is we're working with a consulting group, Clifford Larson and Allen, who have been here in the last couple of days, going over exactly where we stand and what we have to do and what we may be able to do with respect to a finance director. So, that, once we receive some initial reports from them, we'll move forward with replacement of that finance director. In the meantime, they're working with our auditors, and they're working with our staff, providing some additional training and moving forward as, with a proper finance structure.
Well, on that, what are your plans for replacing or fixing our building official situation?
We have an ongoing arrangement that was even operational when Mr. Muse was here, inasmuch as he had not achieved his license hood. And that is that we have an ongoing relationship with Nova, who provides a chief building official, a licensed building official. And at that point in time, we'll continue that relationship, and then we'll go out and search for a building official, a licensed building official.
I guess that's all I have for right now. Oh, I would request council's consideration. One of the items tonight, number five, consider someone in the audience that has to get up at like four in the morning, I'd like to move that up further, closer to the front of the agenda instead of way in the back.
You want to put it...
Identified city property, can we move that up to like number two?
Can do that. That'll go unidentified there, two will go to three, and so on.
Right.
Are you finished?
Are you finished, Terry?
I am.
Go ahead, Richard.
If I may. So, I got an email from one of the residents about the Founder's Day celebration. There's, they said that they have not been issued a yes or no on the use of waterfront park. Any idea if that's okay or not okay to FCT? We're supposed to go to the FCT, are they able to use that?
It depends entirely what their plans are. If they intend to be using, they have to, they have to let us know. Are they going to attempt to be selling alcohol? What exactly are they going to do? I believe that they had a report that they were going to give to council so that we can then move forward on it.
Okay. And I think Ms. Simpson is here, is she here?
It's on the agenda.
Okay, okay. And my last council comment is, may not be pleasant to a lot of people, but I think I need to bring it up. I spent a lot of hours with one, two, three individuals who have a plethora of knowledge of what took place here over the years in dredging, namely Jocelyn, our attorney, Jim over there, and our town manager. I did a fair amount of research on my, on my own, and I'd like to share what I found from this research and discussion with these folks. When I was campaigning, that was one of my platforms to initiate and effect dredging so that the waterways could be utilized for the residents. Well, uh, you know what I've concluded is that dredging was doomed to fail here in this city, and why you say, well, there's one reason, and that's because there was no money. From two thousand and four until the present, the city has spent approximately one point eight million dollars towards dredging, and the return on that investment will be four canals and a spoil site. The reason that, uh, dredging was doomed to fail is because the councils prior really failed to approach it in a pragmatic, common sense, logical way. The first thing that should have been done is to obtain an estimate for the entire dredging project. Secondly, um, the councils failed to provide for funding for whatever that estimate was, if it was seven million dollars, if it was fifteen million dollars, they needed to know that number, they needed to have the funds in place to support that number, and then only then should the permits have been secured, because you can obtain all the permits for dredging, but without the funding, it would never, ever get done, and here's a perfect example. Our permits, our permits are about to expire in October, okay? A lot of work, time, effort, blood, sweat and tears and money have gone into that. This is not the fault of the town manager, this is the fault of prior councils for failing to take on that obligation and that responsibility. Now that said, if this community is serious about dredging, then they have to look at how can we raise the money to dredge? Whatever that estimate is that's given us by the appropriate people to give us that estimate, so what are our options? Well, they're limited, um, and I'm not saying that, or I'm not promoting any one of these options, I'm just saying these are options, whether the council, and that's who's going to have to decide on this, the council, uh, chooses one, two of them, three of them, all of them, a part of, part of them, but they have to make a decision if we're going to really tackle the dredging process in this city. Number one, and there's no significance to this order, raise the mileage rate. Now, raising the mileage rate by one point generates this city approximately two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars a year. The increase in this mileage rate has very little financial impact on a homeowner, I'll give you an example, a home valued at a hundred thousand dollars would cost that homeowner an extra hundred dollars. Number two, a special assessment, there are homes that are on the water that will have the most benefit from dredging, there are other homes that will have a benefit as well merely because the property values will continue to rise, they'll rise for the folks who are on the water and they'll rise for the homes that are not on the water, okay? Now, an example, um, if you, uh, the, the assessments, for instance, can be done, uh, over a period of ten years, many communities undergo assessments for road improvements and things like that, um, a thousand dollars a year, uh, if there were two hundred homes, three hundred homes on the water, I don't know how many homes there are, but if there's a thousand dollars per year for ten years, given the example of, uh, uh, three hundred homes, that would be three hundred thousand dollars per year, over ten years is three million dollars. Thirdly, third option, a bond offering, a bond offering would generate monies, uh, for, for the city, and that the interest that can be paid out on, on a municipal bond could come out of Mr. Lupo's Water Fund, which has over four million dollars, uh, in it. And fourth, um, you would have to reduce the overhead of this city. Now, that would be something that the council would have to look at, is where would the greatest reduction in overhead of the city come from, and how much money could they ascertain from that overhead? Okay, so, in order to dredge the other twenty-six channels, is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
In there-
Close to it?
Yeah.
Okay, you're gonna need millions of dollars, and only then, once you've de- established how much money you need, then you have to apply some of these options, all one to, uh, to, to effectively raise the capital that you need to, uh, complete the project. Otherwise, you need, the, the dredging issue should be foreclosed at this time. I have no other comments.
Let me, uh, tag on, as far as, uh, starting this, it was my fault. We never got estimates because estimates are very difficult to get from qualified people when we're not gonna do it, okay? So, after that realization, uh, the estimates from the newspaper, seventy-one million, that's absurd. The real estimate, I can tell you because I've been doing this so long, about three million dollars, that's what it's gonna take. We've gone through the assessment deal, no one, no one has seemed very, uh, happy about that, the bond is certainly, uh, a possibility, decreasing overhead, I think is without a doubt the, a, the place we go, and, uh, maybe raising mileage. Guys, w- we've come too far to not do this, and then there's too many people that live on the water that pay their taxes and can't use the water, it's just not right, and that's what got me on this seventeen years ago. By the way, I want an RFP now, I can have it, right? Can I have an RFP? You can answer that? A bidder's can have it, it's public knowledge, please give me one. Did I hear an okay? All right. We're gonna all have to put it, pull together if you want this to happen, I know, realize that, got it candlelighted, isn't a big deal, but we got your two big deals. Not yet, you're gonna get them. And now to tag on to that, government never likes to make money, we just like to tax you and spend it, but we are, I, I want on the next agenda, the, um, Nix Park kiosk, 'cause I hate to tell you folks, we're not gonna fund the rest of the county launching and, uh, fishing and parking on our nickel, we've spent two hundred thousand dollars and getting ready to spend that much?
What is the actual number, it's more than that?
No, two hundred thousand in the past plus-
Nix Park? Yeah, two hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand, we get nothing back, I want that kiosk in, and they're gonna have to pay to put their boat in, and they're gonna have to pay to park there, and everybody, we can, we, let me ask Jim a question, does that CBDG grant still prohibit us from giving any freebie?
Say it again?
The CBDG grant.
Community Development Block Grant?
Mm-hmm, that was cited-
I know what it is, yeah, there were previous grants-
It was cited as a reason we could not give, like, Port Ritchie people wanted to, uh, part three, which I don't think is necessary, but we couldn't do that in-
I, I understand the question, under the previous community development block grants for a period of, I don't know, five years or something, I can't remember what it was, I'll have to check, that we couldn't-
Twenty, I'm sorry, Jim.
Twenty years.
Twenty years.
The restriction?
The money from the county.
The community development block grants, previously when they were granted to us, had a tail on them that we couldn't, is what their mayor's referring to-
Okay, yes, I agree.
That we could not charge non-Port Ritchie residents more than we char- charged our residents, now there was a timeframe on that, you're working on my memory here from years ago, but I thought it was five years, seven years, but we could check it, but I, I think they've expired by now, there's additional monies coming in now, and I'm not sure what restrictions are there, so if your question is can we charge county residents differently than Port Ritchie residents, I, I couldn't tell you because this is different money-
Right, well, I, I'll just announce, we're not gonna give anybody a freebie, we'll have some Port Ritchie freebies on the other side of the river, uh, where, where the DM, MA, uh, I guess that's all I have to say, we have to look at rea- ways to make money and, and get this done, it's gonna get done. Okay, anybody else on council?
Just one last thing, this project list we were just given, it does not have our hike and bike trail project on it for under the bridge, and it does not have the hike and bike trail connect to the Salt Springs Park on it either, and those are two of our major things I've been working on for eight years and are not even on the project list.
Well, I just looked at, that, I pulled the C, uh, the NPO, uh, agenda out, it's not on that agenda, but we are first funded for that, for the hike and bike trail under nineteen, so we're moving, we're moving, you might have to put stakes down to see the progress. Are you gonna electrically send me that RFP? If you know anyone that dredges, please ask them to bid on these properties, or these canals. Are they gonna be electric or? Uh, paper please, okay, all right, I got kicked out for a while, but I'm back. Okay, we are at two, which is five, right?
Maybe you want to do the consent agenda, it's only gonna take a minute.
Okay, do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion for discussion, uh, wanna know what this Pasco County Home Depot TS two is for twenty-eight thousand.
It's a sewer bill.
It's a what?
Sewer, sewer bill.
Sewer?
Sewer bill.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I made the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes, and that moves us to five, which is really two.
All right, um, I asked to have this put on here, uh, it was discussed a very long time ago, and no action's been taken, and I was requested by, uh, Bill and Susan Gregoire to pursue this, um, unfortunately, there seems to be a piece of land adjacent to their property that was originally supposed to be part of a channel, and the design of the channel showed it to be dredged and become part of the channel, but that was ne- it never happened, it, instead of a, a pointed end, it ended up with a rounded end, so this has caused a problem because the Gregwar's were under the impression they bought waterfront property, they've been paying taxes on waterfront property, and come to find out that that's city land and they do not have waterfront property, so it is, uh, is my, uh, I guess I'll make the motion that the city move forward to get a survey of that property, that little, it's, it's a very small piece, but it is crucial, and it greatly impacts the value of the Gregware's property, so I think we should get a surveyor out there, survey that land so we can get an identity on it and a location, and then I believe, being they've already paid all these taxes for all these years, and the people that had the house before them paid taxes on waterfront property for all those years, that the city would deed that property over to them for one dollar, and I make that motion.
Second.
Motion in a second, we want to discuss this, anybody in the public want to talk to it?
Yes, sir. With regard to the motion itself, uh, the, I did a little homework on this, uh, without all the, I'll try to keep this as simple as, can you hear me? As, as simple as possible. Yes, sir. I went back to the original plat, I believe it's nineteen sixty-two, okay? Uh, that's McCullum Canal, matter of fact, in case you're curious, it's, uh, the Pridgenet Canal, it's just, uh, west of that, but that's the McCullum Canal there, and, uh, the, the canal is just like you said, uh, councilman, the, uh, it's a point at the end, and I suspect it was dredged flat, I don't think this is an accretment case, which is where land accumulated, you understand me? I make that presumption, I don't know, leaving that triangle for the lack of a better word. When a property is dedicated as a canal, this wasn't dedicated as a street, but specifically dedicated as a canal, street is just kinda like a street, and it's never titled in the city's name, so you can't give it to them by title, okay? We don't, we don't own that, we have the use of that as a canal, what you would do to accomplish your task, okay, is the city can vacate that, as a matter of fact, there's a couple of places in Florida that had canals done a hundred years ago, and they vacated old canals and have filled in with mud all the time, so this is not that unusual a scenario. So, just with regard to the motion, you can't deed it to them, we couldn't deed it, but we can vacate it, now to vacate a plat, a portion of a plat, certain laws regarding that, since this only affects two parcels at the end of that canal, okay, both of the homeowners must join in the application, that's the law, okay? So now, one of them can make the application and get the signature of the other to join in the application, and then it would come before council, we don't have an application for it, but I could, there are, you know, make one up, join in the application, the applicant generally would pay for the survey, boundary survey it would have to be, because that would be needed for the vacating ordinance, that'd be published in the paper, open hearing, done twice, and the law is, and this is what's important, the law is, once it's vacated, it's just like a street, by common law, the two adjoining landowners would get the half, you understand what I mean? So it's, we can't give it, but we can vacate it, whatever two parcel owners are at the end, we get that pursuant to common law, what's half, I would think it's coming down the middle there, but that's as much as the city could do, that, so really, it's the same thing, the same conclusion that you're talking about, but that's would be the process.
So, so you, your contention is that the city does not own that land?
City doesn't own it theoretically, that we have a deed and we could write a, you know, prepare a deed and go off it, we would vacate it, just like a street, if it was a portion of a street we wasn't using, we would vacate it and the, and the adjoining parcel owners would own it.
Well, I got a problem with that because I had a long discussion with the county assessor, and the county assessor said that the only thing that belongs to anybody else is the water, which is controlled by, is not even actually owned by the state, but it's controlled by the state, whatever passes over, whatever goes into it, the land underneath that water belongs to the city of Port Ritchie, the land around it, unless it's privately owned, belongs to the city of Port Ritchie, and on the plat, when you click on it, it says City of Port Ritchie, so I do not-
Yeah, I, I understand that, that it, every road says it's the city of Port Ritchie, but we vacate roads all the time, following the law for the vacating of roads, you know, do we own it? Fine, but it's, it's not coming out of, in other words, we weren't deeded it, the only ownership is the use of this plat.
Well-
You can have that, you could have the assessors off for school being, you know, I'll explain it to them, but I'm sure it's the county attorney who'd explain it to them.
We, we vacated that property for Whiskey Joe's, that-
Yeah, that's how we did it, yeah.
Old, the old road, you remember? We did that several months ago, we had to vacate that, we couldn't deed it to them, we did have to vacate that.
Well, I'm wondering why we were able to do that with the Duffy property right up the road on, on Bay Boulevard, because that was our property, we didn't do it that way there, we deeded it over to them and gave it to them.
I, I can't remember the Duffy property, but I think somehow we owned that, not through a, a road. I can't remember the Duffy property, but I think somehow we owned that, not through a road. You understand what I mean?
We owned it and he paid for it.
Yeah. That came from a different place. This is right off the plat.
Either way, it seems, go ahead.
Yeah, well, it says in the charter they can vacate it, but, so here we are, here's the council, and Jim, I respect your information about the, normally the homeowner pays for the survey.
Yeah, you could do what you want, I'm just telling you generally.
It's up to the council to direct the city to pay for the survey.
Do whatever you like.
And if the council wants to do that, and vote that way, then that's the way it should be done. If not, then it should be done some other way. So I just wanna make that clarification.
I had someone in the city wanted to speak. You wanna go last or first? Go ahead.
Eighty-three oh one, Congress, Matthew Todd. This is ridiculous that this has got dragged out this far, Mr. Mayor and Council. The residents pay the taxes on that property, and we gotta stick up for one another here. The right thing to do is turn that property over to them two homeowners and be done with it. They deserve it, they pay taxes on it. Put yourself in their shoes, how would you feel? I'm sorry, I had to say that, but please do the right thing and let the two residents own, get their property. Thank you.
Oh, there's an interesting caveat, I just have to bring this up, because it is kinda comical. There was a tree that grew on that land, and either a year, a year, year and a half ago, I guess, man, about a year ago, the city issued Mr. Gregoire a permit to remove that tree. How did they do that if we didn't own it?
That I can't help you with. I would know that.
If I'm not mistaken, though, that tree was, not was, on a property, because the triangle is, I don't know.
It was right on the water's edge.
We don't know. All I know is I'm getting your property.
Michael Grimes, five four four zero, Quiz Drive. Jim, you mentioned you did some research. Do you have any case law similar to this that you could reference? Where did you find this information?
You're talking to Jim?
The city attorney. I mean, is there any case law that you can run?
Not to be difficult, Mr. Grimes, I'll do respect this for technicality and don't take this wrong. Counsel, have a question for me?
Do you, would you like to relay the question?
Well, what I was gonna ask a little bit differently. What is the documentation that you have that either proves or disproves the city owns or does not own this property? What do you have?
I have the plat. That's how the city gets streets and canal. I have the plat. You understand what I mean? That's how the city... Somebody else owned the big area at one time, okay? Nobody, that person that owned it didn't deed us anything. The way it works is you put plats of record and certain laws regarding plating, and there are statutes and cases, and so it was dedicated to us, not deeded to us, dedicated. That's how it works.
Okay. And would a survey bear that out?
Survey wouldn't be, a title search will pull up the plat. I'm pretty confident this is a plat. I pulled it up.
Okay, okay. So moving forward...
The survey would just survey that triangle, that's land, and then you'd go out and say, "Tell me what's land pursuant, you know, flowing from the plat."
So the only, really the only way to truly determine the ownership, the grantor, grantee ownership, that whole chain, is to do a title search.
Thank Councilman.
When you say a title search, okay, this isn't in the, in other words...
It's not titled property.
Well, I think he's saying that it's not.
No, it's everything was done properly here. Every single street and canal in this city's the same way, okay? And it's the same way everywhere. Canals are vacated all the time. This is some theory of mine.
No, no, no. What you're saying is that if a title search had been...
It would go back to the plat.
It had been performed, there wouldn't be any ownership, there wouldn't be a grantor or a grantee.
No, a title search would take you back to the plat. I did that myself, you know what I mean? And it took me back to the plat. And now that I'm at the plat, I see how the city gained an interest in the property. It gained its interest just like it did a street by dedication. And it was the dedication canal, it's actually written here specifically, that that canal is dedicated to the city, just like every street. We don't have deeds to the streets either.
Thought I made the motion.
Okay, we have a motion that...
How long will this take to get done? I mean, this has gone long enough.
Get done? Well, vacating, someone has to make the application. The city, and I could show you that case, cannot act on its own volition, it's a case. Cannot act on its own volition, it must be done by application. By the adjoining, whoever's affected by it. So one person can do it, and the other one can sign off and say, "I'm okay with it doing," or they can make a joint application.
Does that application cost something?
Oh, if we wanna charge 'em.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just telling you that some places that vacate canals and streets, there's places that vacate canals all the time. And they have a fee for that, whether you wanna charge anything. We don't have any set fee for it, that's up to the council or whatever you wanna do.
I'm more worried about the city getting sued for collecting taxes and the county as well.
Collecting taxes on what?
On waterfront property that's not waterfront. And was sold and lived in and considered waterfront, marked on their tax forms as waterfront, and it was never waterfront.
The property appraiser's office determines taxable value. We do not. So we have no exposure here whatsoever.
But we took some of those taxes that were generated.
I understand that, but we don't assess it. It doesn't work that way legally. We don't have any liability for the assessment. There is rights of appeal and assessment if someone didn't have waterfront property, et cetera, but there's no liability for the city.
Okay, so what I'm gathering is, do we need a, do they need a survey or do we need a survey for what we are gonna?
You do, you need, you need an applicant to step forward. I could show you that, I'll send you that by email if you wanna see it. We cannot act on our own volition. An applicant either goes forward by themselves, or they need the signature of the other affected party before we can act. Then you need the survey, so you know what the triangle is there.
Right.
Then after you have the boundary survey and the meets and bounds, we then have to do this by ordinance, just the way we vacate a street.
So maybe we should, you wanna read?
You can get your survey right away at the end of the ceremony, but I guess my problem is, I'm a little hesitant in light of the case law that says we can't act on our own volition here, but I think if you want a survey just to know, I don't have a problem with that. You wanna order the survey for us?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I would like to...
You're gonna need an application file.
Have the city get that survey, at the very least, for these people, since they have been paying.
And I understand that, Terry, but I think we can expect that the applicants will be applying quickly.
Yes, we have a form for that, that they can make out to...
Jim, I'll make...
Matter of fact, if you remember, when Whiskey Joe's came in to request us to vacate that portion of a street was half in the water, I told you, there was a reason why, that they're bringing an application, because we don't have an application for it. But it's a name address form, it's a very simple form. I can get an application.
All right, thank you.
I can get the Philly Department an application right away.
Would you like to make a motion that says, once the applicant has made, has applied, that the city will...
Yeah, I'll remove my previous motion and make one that, that once the petitioner, I guess you would call them, creates the paperwork for this property, that the city pay for the survey and with all expediency, get this thing turned over to them, whatever it takes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, anybody in the, oh dear God. Go ahead.
And dear God is right, because I'm a minister.
I'm talking to myself, I'm sorry.
All right.
Jenny?
Sandra Spalding, eighty-six, twelve Green Street.
Go ahead.
Excuse me.
Hello.
Go ahead.
They've been paying taxes for waterfront since they bought it. They bought it as waterfront. The city is doing the right thing by giving it to them. Whatever way it has to be that's legal, let's do it. And say thank you for all the excess taxes you paid.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Attorney, I'd like to ask you a question, please. I believe that Ms. Sorrell cannot or should not second the motion.
No problem, I'll refuse to.
I'll second the motion.
I agree with that. Second, and I think we all understand the essence, if not the exact verbiage of the... Jim will take care of this. We will take over the appraisal. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, we are back from five to two, and life is good. We are at Founder's Day Letter for waterfront district businesses. That, Lori, are you gonna speak to that, or?
Claudia Smith, seven three three five, Candlelight Courts. As you know, the Citizens Advisory Committee is up and running. We have seven members. We have been meeting once, twice a month. We have some items that are before you, that Lori has presented to you, that we're working on, and that we hope that you will vote in favor of. I did wanna tell you a couple of things that we've done. One of our members, Tom Concilla, I hope I said his name right, thought that we should do some sort of monthly cleanup. And so they did the first one, which was Waterfront Park, and it was very successful. There were many bags of trash that they found. They went into a lot of the crevices and ditches, which, you know, the maintenance people, they don't have time to do that sort of thing. And that was one of the goals of the Citizens Advisory Committee, was to be able to take some of those loads off of the employees. They found a lot of needles and a lot of alcohol bottles. And I did talk to the police chief and told him where they found some of that stuff, and they're gonna be a little bit more watchful in those little areas. We did have people that was noticing what we were doing and asking, "Who are you? Why are you cleaning?" So we're trying to get our name out there. We have an email address that we're going to start publishing. Where citizens can send us concerns or, you know, things that they might want us to look at or work with you on. Just for your information, it's C A C at cityofportritchie.com. We also have our meetings now set for the first and third Thursday at seven o'clock here at Ridge Road. And going forward, once we either plan the Founder's Day and we get through it, we may knock that back down to once a month. But for now, we feel like we have to do that to be able to get this project off and make it, be able to make it happen. Hopefully, you will vote in favor. We want to do another cleanup at Brasher Park. Pasco County is doing a grand cleanup on March second. And with your approval, we would like to schedule Brasher Park as our next one on March second. And we would like y'all to be able to vote on that tonight, if possible, where we can go forward. At some point in the next couple of weeks, we hope to have you a schedule of what park we're gonna be cleaning and date, where you can look at it and approve it, we hope. I would think you would want the parks as cleaned as we can. That's the first step, we thought, was cleaning Port Ritchie, looking at some of the streets and so on. But for now, the parks. So that's what we've been doing. I'm gonna give the platform to Lori.
I think it's one. And government does not approve of you doing things free.
Laurie Simpson, five zero zero six Sunset Boulevard. This is a great committee. I was on the Citizens Advisory Committee like over ten years ago, and we didn't really do much. But this group, I didn't know any of these people until I got on there, and they're just great people. They really care about the city. They've got a lot of great ideas. And I'll try to make this brief, but we do have three things that we wanna go over with you tonight. Other things we're working on, a survey monkey is gonna be a questionnaire for the citizens to find, just get feedback from everybody on, you know, what they would like to see with our city and concerns they have that we can address and bring to council. We wanna try to be a help to council, not a headache. And I don't think, you know, anybody on the committee is, you know, looking to have any ulterior motives or anything, but it's all good stuff. So anyway, the first thing is the, I had sent you some prices for these mini libraries that other cities are purchasing. They're quite costly, they can cost up to like five hundred dollars. And then you still gotta assemble them, these mini free libraries. But with shipping and everything, but Mr. Lane, Mr. Lee had gone and made one with scraps that he had around his house that cost us nothing. So we'd like to be able to put that, do a test pilot on the first one and just see how that goes, and put it at the dog park by City Hall, because it's right by the police department, and we can kinda monitor it and see if there's gonna be a problem with vandalism or whatever, hopefully not. But he's gonna, he made this. And it costs zero.
Blaine, I don't care what they say about you, you ain't that bad.
Isn't that great?
That is fabulous. Thank you, sir, again.
So could we get permission to do that, put that up at the dog park?
Let Jim tell me if there's...
We wanna have it placed up at the dog park. I think we need a stand for it, right? Oh, you have the stand? All right. So we'll need somebody to put some in and hold.
I'm not doing that, if you ask me legally, you can do it.
No, no, no. I'm sure our Public Works Department could do that. And then I'll get the books. We'll get the books donated and put it in there.
You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
If it doesn't cost us money, you know, it's really...
As long as this is gonna work out, then we wanna, you know, we can get some other people to help us with it.
I would donate for some materials or some crappy, I could do some crappy work, but I'll do the materials if he'll do the work.
Okay, and then the next thing was, so can we get permission on that, or?
Do we need a motion for that, Jim?
Is that something that the city manager can?
We can make a motion to set the new library box at the dog park in the city.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, are we talking about this dog park or the two be here?
The dog park at my city, right here, yeah.
You're giving this to the city, right?
Yes.
Which will be insured, then, and be part of our property going on into the...
The second motion I think we need is to allow them to do a cleanup at Brasher Park March second.
I'll make the motion to approve that. Do we need to approve this every time they wanna do a cleanup?
Unless you wanna vote for something that they don't need your approval, you know what I mean? They're an advisory committee at this point in time.
That's what I was thinking. I mean, couldn't the city manager just approve that?
You know, you wanna vote to say, "Look, you can do cleanups," period, whatever, you know.
I'll make the motion that we allow them to do cleanups at their discretion.
Because we were just gonna go and do it, and then we were told, "No, you can't do that without getting permission."
Well, you got it now. I have a motion. And a second, all in favor?
Thank you. And then, secondly, you're gonna love this committee, because we wanna have our, we want your permission to use the city seal for shirts so that when we're out there picking up trash, at least they know who we are. We're willing to buy our shirts ourselves, we wanna get polo shirts, but we know that we have to get your approval to use the city seal.
We have a motion?
Motion to approve the use of the city.
You have the authority to approve the use of the seal, isn't it?
Okay.
Motion approved.
Okay, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, this is getting easier, okay, and then, thirdly, is the Founder's Day event, uh, which, we, we would really like to get an answer on this tonight, because we're running out of time, um, we want to put this together and have a car show, it's gonna encompass the whole waterfront district, and the other restaurants, we want to have folk music, we want to have the car show, we would like to have, um, we can get a free beer truck, usually it charges like fifteen hundred dollars, unless you're a, um, five oh one C three, and we wanted to have the Port Ritchie Volunteer Fire, Firefighters Incorporated, they have a fi- five oh one C three, and S P C A as our, um, benefactor for that, and the only way we can generate money is to have the beer truck there, so, um, but it's not gonna be, it's gonna be a, a family friendly, friendly event, it's not gonna be a big, you know, drunken brawl or anything, but when people are looking at the shows, we're gonna have sodas and waters also, um, at least they would have the ability to have something to drink, and we would have a way to generate money for the fire department and the S P C A.
Have we contacted the F C T on this? No, we haven't, we haven't received the specifics from them on exactly what they want, F C T, F C T controls all of that, we've spoken about this dozens of times here before, council.
We did submit something before Christmas on what we wanted to do.
What are you, you're talking about getting the park?
The issue is whether you want to serve beer or not, we've had several different conversations with, uh, F C T about the serving of alcohol, uh, it's not necessarily serving alcohol, council has to approve that, the issue is your, how you account for the money, what you're going to do with the money, those are the things that you have to come up with, that we have to submit to F C T, we have absolutely no control over their requirements.
Yeah, well, um, we're able to get the, the beer truck for free, and then the proceeds would be split between the S P C A and the fire department.
You know, I, I'm not sure, but I believe you could write the F C T, because we did it, uh, when the Restore Act was a problem, and, uh, and.
I think they're gonna want to hear from the city, though, on this one, but, uh, Mayor.
Okay, uh, you want to write?
You've talked to, uh, Mr., Mr. Lee has talked, has written to the F C T.
Okay, and what did they tell him?
Do you want to interject here?
I had a brief discussion with, uh, Mr. Bibby at F C T, and his, uh, he relayed to me that he didn't think that there, the F C T has no problem with alcohol in the park for specific events, um, for, for, you know, and you need a license, which is only good for three day, a maximum of three days, um, and there's a twenty-five dollar fee for the license, um, but he didn't feel there was any problem getting approval from F C T, uh, but he had to have approval that the city sanctioned at first.
Okay.
Having alcohol in the park, for special events, or this one special event, or whatever.
Jim, how, what, or the chicken and the egg, uh, do we sanction it, let them call?
Oh, is that what you're asking me?
Yeah.
I think basically what we're looking for tonight is just approval to move forward from the city of having a Founder's Day event, we realize that, uh, to conform with F C T, we have to come up with detailed plans on.
Correct.
What's gonna be where, and what we're gonna do, and not so much where the money's going to, or anything, and they're, they're not really concerned where the money goes to, I asked them if, if money could go to, because normally in the, the agreement, uh, it says, the money has to go to, back into the improvements at the park, but I asked them about, uh, money going to a not-for-profit organization, and they said that was perfectly fine, uh, but, you know, we realize that we need to, we.
Button up the end.
We need, we need to make a, you know, plot map, basically.
We can't do anything till we get it.
You know, but we need your permission to move forward, uh, we can't, there's no sense in this.
You want permission to move forward with alcohol, or you want permission to move forward with Founder's Day?
We can, we can work around if we can't have alcohol, we can work around that.
I think we all have alcohol.
Can we just make a motion based on?
Just have Founder's Day, and then we can.
Yeah, just write it that way, have a Founder's Day based on F C T approval, and then move forward that way.
And we need to approve that?
Well, F C T will need that, right?
I'm sorry?
F C T will need a floor plan, and, and everything.
I just want to make sure we have everything you need.
Make a motion to approve the use of, of the park.
Waterpark.
For Founder's Day, and that, once the, um, they, all the particulars have been finalized with the, with that committee, that, that should be sent to F C T for their approval, they have our blessing, now put it together, and let the administration call F C T, and, and, and send it up there.
Can I make a comment on that, Dr. Bloom?
Please.
I, I, I agree with you in terms of mechanics, Ev, but from the legal standpoint, my only concern is that, with regard to the F C T, the liability, if we make a mistake, they'll pull that park from us, okay, generally, and I think we've gotten some letters about this, okay? The application process to the F C T needs to go through the city, in other words, they can make up a list of what they want to do, give it to the city, we'll send it over to them, but they're gonna make us monitor the money, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's right.
Yes, sir.
They're gonna make us monitor the money, so whatever plan they have, just shoot it up to the F C T, see what they say, but we'll be responsible for that plan, we've already done this once, and then get, we had problems already, right?
Yeah.
Right, and, and so, if you have enough problems, they're gonna pull that park from us.
You're suggesting they send it up?
No, we do.
Oh, okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I'm saying, let them make the plan up, but we need to take, keep control of the monitoring of it, because they, you know, we had a problem already, and we, we've already received advice concerning this, and everything that we've told, we've said is absolutely correct, is that the letter we got from them?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And so, well, that would be my recommendation, because the liability will fall on us, if there's a problem.
Uh, and Dr. Bloom, did you get that in the form of a motion?
Well, yeah, the motion was to, uh, approve the Founder's Day, um, uh, program in the park, uh, and once that we have received from the, uh, the committee, all the specifics, send it to the F C T, and get their blessing, and move forward. We'll send it to the F C T. Yes.
Right, okay, so.
It's May eighteenth, by the way, for this.
It's next, okay.
That would be my recommendation.
If you guys could put that together quickly, get it over to Jocelyn?
Get it over to me.
Or, or Mr. Lupo, and, uh, we will certainly back you.
I'll second Mr. Bloom's motion, then.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you got it.
As, as far as the, uh, free library things, uh, it's in your packet, I think that, uh, if, uh, there was, uh, some information about a company that makes them and sells them, I think it's like three hundred dollars for the kit, and you still have to put them together, and that's still just raw wood, it's not painted or anything like that, uh, like he said, I put this together from scraps I had around my house, but I kind of figured it out, as far as to make it from, from scratch, from good wood, uh, they're about a hundred and quarter a piece.
That's a hundred and quarter a dollar, okay, I'll, I'll donate for one, and anybody else that wants to?
And it could be cheaper, it depends on, you know, like, the, future ones, if I make them, I would have asphalt, uh, or, you know, shingles on the top, and stuff like that, and we could probably go to, you know, roofing companies, and they, they throw away bundles.
I think you can go to Home Depot, and they'll donate the plywood and stuff, but, whatever.
One, one, one three-quarter inch piece of four by eight plywood will make three of those.
Okay, well, um.
And that's, and that piece of plywood's like thirty-six dollars.
What?
And that's exterior.
Well, we can go begging, and if they don't give it to us, I'll pay, how's that, tell me when you want to go. All right, we're, we got a motion and a second, we voted yes?
Yep.
Good, we're done? We're done?
No, no, we have one more.
We have.
We have flooding issues left?
Yes.
That is, um, Dr. Bloom.
So, uh, just by way of background, um, a number of homes and streets in the city experienced water intrusion as a result of heavy rains, and not necessarily from tropical storms or hurricanes, I expect that, that some of these flooding issues are very easily remedied, and I'm sure some are more difficult than others. Uh, understandably, the flooding, uh, of homes, uh, of the streets and homes diminish property values, uh, and clearly, clearly is detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of, of the residents. I believe, and I'm confident, that all council members agree that this city has an obligation to the residents that experience this water intrusion, the flooding, of those homes and those streets from heavy rains, therefore, I motion to have the city manager identify all residential homes that manifest water intrusion from rain, water, and next determine the most cost-effective solution to remedy that. It's a three-part motion, Jim.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with it, I follow it down.
Next, secondly, identify those streets that flood during heavy rains, and determine the most cost-effective solution to remedy that flooding, and thirdly, identify all the drainage ditches, culverts, and water pipes that are non-functional, and determine what remedial measures need to be taken, and the cost for completing this project. This town, uh, uh, it's two thousand and nineteen, nobody should have to live in a flood, nobody's home should flood, nobody should have to drive through flooded streets to get home, and finally, this analysis, we would expect to be completed within four to six weeks, and presented to the council at that time, at the following council meeting, once it's completed.
Now, was it a three-part motion, or do I have a three-part?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, anyone to speak, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think that is a great project. With that said, do we have anything?
Old business, if you want to do that.
I believe under the old business, that most of us have covered this in the first fifty minutes of our meeting.
Okay, I do want to make one other thing, uh, um, seven, eight years ago, um, we were gonna put up, uh, the signs entering and leaving Port Ritchie, and I asked that it be, uh, Port Ritchie, Pasco's Gateway to the Gulf, it gives it a political little punch, somehow it got, and that was, uh, was approved unanimously, somehow it got turned into our gateway to the Gulf, which is pretty much like, I don't know, jello. I would like the council to consider Pasco's Gate, Port Ritchie, Pasco's Gateway to the Gulf, as an appropriate new sign when we're ready to change.
Esco's Portway.
It, it, it tells, it tells a story. Who is the founder, by the way? Can I get a motion for that, or no?
It's not on the agenda.
Oh, you can't put it on, put it on the agenda next time, now, do I have a, get rid of a, do you want to, yes?
Do we need to, uh, have a motion on it?
Blaine Lee, fifty-seven, thirteen, Berlin, I just wondered, have you seen the new signs at the entrances to New Port Ritchie?
Yes, sir.
I have not, are they nice?
They're very impressive.
Well, I'm only, the verbiage is all I care about, and we can get impressive if we can get impressive.
I was down there this weekend, and the, uh, Orange Lake area is, is absolutely stunning, they are putting in some type of, looks like ramps or something to go out into the water, it's, it's nicely done, um, I did ask what they were using for money on that, and I was told that it is used, they're using, uh, penny for Pasco funds for that.
Let me tell you something, if you want to see stunning, you raise our rates to nine point five. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Done.
You got a bullet?
All in, do you?